...here tonight for a roll call. Additions to the agenda, I've seen three of them. We've got numbers four, five, and six in the personnel.
Correct.
Any others?
We're good on the agenda.
Okay.
Additional additions?
With those additions, I entertain a motion for the HOP. Tell them what the motion they did.
Second.
And second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number five, approve the corrective amendments from the August 14th meeting. Motion of Bob, second by Luke. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Financial reports, you've got the July and 2012 Treasury report. Any comments on these?
I think the only one would be in the third sheet. You can see the minus seven dollars, one hundred and forty-three. It just deals with workman's comp. We are budgeted for that, but until we figure out what exactly which areas we need to do it, we wait till, I think we do it a couple times during the year in budget, so that will disappear. So right now, there is a budget for that. It's just until we figure out where it goes. That's why it's negative.
I'd like most of both financial reports. Motion by Dave. And second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. On to bills. Mark, did you put an address in?
Yes, I did. I had the opportunity to go in and review the additional July and August bills. And you probably remarked that there's not a lot of activity that's going on. I think what they're kind of holding up is to make sure that we have enough cash for the rental bar. So it looks like maybe that September, we won't have a lot more bills to approve. So, but right now, are you making a motion or a petition to accept a bill by yourself?
Okay, motion by Mark to approve the July and August bills.
Second.
Second by Luke. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. And a concession, we've got one item. That's operator David, actually, who works at the final elementary safety improvement plan. What do you have on that?
No, that's a pretty common practice. He puts the plan together after he gets done developing the plan. He shows me, we look at it, make sure it's okay, then we submit it to the state.
Motion down.
Second.
Second by Gretchen. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number one, business. How does she respond to Dick Rooker's comment on the August 14th meeting? And Dick Rooker made a comment at our last meeting, summarizing, he is concerned that the board has provided misinformation violations of open meeting law. This has been previously publicly, this has been previously publicly stated, we acknowledge that we did not state names of the staff that we were evaluating as we should have according to open meeting laws. It was a mistake and we apologize. It was unintentional and nobody was attempting to mislead anybody. We were always intended to comply with open meeting law and will continue to do so. If we make another mistake in the future, which we hope not to, we will again correct it immediately. To address this alleged misinformation by board members regarding additional funding, I state that any confusion regarding the issue can be explained and Bob will address the issue during his administrative report to clarify the funding piece of it. Once again, there was really no attempt to mislead or deceive. There was some confusion because the number brought up in the discussion was not the actual number based on the general education formula. In 2011, the legislature approved a fifty dollars per funding of general ed formula. I think there was a number going around of eighty-seven dollars and that included special education and literacy formula. And I think that your neighbor was talking about the general education formula. So it was just a miscommunication between us. There was never any attempt to mislead or deceive anybody.
Motion just don't understand.
The confusion should have been addressed possibly at the following meeting, but it wasn't. Not because there was, again, an intention to mislead, because matter of arrest, the board did not draw on the conversation. We're not a party board. Bottom line is that every member of this board cares deeply about the education that we provide for our children here in Gainesville. We strive for support for the community rather than antagonists. Hopefully, we can move beyond differences and work together here to support Gainesville schools. Number two, would you consider approval of college in the schools, concurrent enrollment agreement between Central X College and Gainesville area schools for the 1213 school?
This has been an agreement that's been in place for, I'm not sure how many years, but it allows our kids to take upper level courses. It's sort of that.
Motion of Bob, second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number three, would you consider approval of our membership of schools for equity and education, see the 1213 school?
Second.
We have been a member of this organization for a number of years.
We usually do it earlier in the summer, but there's a change going on. We can get on a little bit.
I thought you missed the bill. So, otherwise, it would have been on when the agendas are ready.
I'll make the motion that we continue our membership with schools for equity and education.
Okay, motion down.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number four, would you consider approval of memorandum of understanding for certification in open letter, we're to time a second.
And really what the memorandum of understanding does is that it outlines rules of responsibility with each entity. And I think this is a needed piece. And you could say this one, but they probably need to define what rules of responsibility each entity was. I think I concluded you're back at all the information.
Okay, motion by Gretchen, and second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number five, would you consider approval of PSEL tuition, they worked on a college Gainesville school, 1213 school.
This, Ted, is even a better deal for us because we keep the students, we keep most of the dollars that's worth giving. So it allows us to keep some of the funding for this. I should say it's a better one, but it allows us to keep some of it, whereas we didn't have this agreement, we would lose it all.
Second. Second by Luke. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. And number six, would you consider approval of contract for that risk chemical free counselor services recovered plus St. Cloud Hospital for one and a half days per week for consultants?
This is the same contract that we had last year. We are going for a matching grant. We believe we have luck with that, but we don't know for sure. If that happens, then the person would come in at no cost, plus another day. So then we get two and a half days, and that's the way it was last year. So we're hoping to have the same piece in place.
If for some reason you don't get the grant?
We would still keep her as a day and a half. We believe we have the need for that. Is it in our?
No, I was going to say, would you come back to consider paying their dollars?
I think, I think at that point, I would need to sit down with the principal, have a discussion about the need, and then possibly come back to the board and say that we believe that this is something that's really necessary. We're really hoping we'll get the matching grant.
So am I, but I'd hate to see it if you can cut down one wire where she's got a lot on it.
She is, and I would agree with that. But at least for now, this is what I think we should recommend for the president and Talbot. The grant comes through also through the important board.
Motion down.
Second.
Second by Luke. My Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, on to personnel. Would you consider approval of Henry Matt Stane as secondary administrative assistant effective September 10th?
This is the one we've been waiting for, that we've had a little bit of difficulty finding a replacement. So it's just replacing a person I resigned.
This is the high school secretary. Second. Motion by Dave, and second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number two, would you consider approval of resignation of Teresa Gears, payroll specialist effective September 13th, 2012?
I insisted putting it on the agenda. Could say that.
So, motion by Dave. Second. Second by Mark. Any further discussion?
You couldn't talk her into a dumb idea as much as I tried.
I think it will open up another conversation that we need to court from the handle of direction we did with the whole administrative office. So, and we talked to somebody who was a little bit, he was, that's kind of the same box that I had as well, so.
So it'd be certainly something that we might talk about at a work session. We'll have at least another work session fairly quickly to continue our discussion about the levy, so that we could have that discussion to dig in at least to have communications on it.
Anything else on that? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Would you, would we better set up this morning, school, huh?
Yep.
Would you consider approval of Blue Star Camp band driver, approximately three and a half hours per day for the 1213 school year effective September 4th, 2012?
I believe it keeps him, that's the deal as far as how much money that it works at for you to sort of.
Motion of Bob.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. In the minutes of, of the evening right now. Okay, number four, would you consider approval of Donald Murray, if the sound supervised effective August 20th, 2012?
Just replace the resignation.
Maybe he can explain that.
I think so.
Yes.
I'd have to look at somebody else and answer that question. I know that he told me he was a young man, but young is relative to me, so.
No, I was just wondering what his plans were to fall. Do you know if he's hanging around or obviously?
I don't think so. I think he's maybe more into the military or something. I guess it's kind of a short-term thing to get in the process and you see.
So, motion by Mark.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Number five, would you consider approval of Michael Deering, special education band driver effective September 4th, 2012?
They're still going to be a little short, but this is getting closer.
Just signal on hours, move.
I'm not sure what the hours are.
I think this one is going to be about three hours.
I think it will certainly be a discussion eventually over to the board of own. And I have talked a little bit with the bus company. I think there might be some benefits to us looking at incorporating and having the bus company also look at possibly some band drivers. It is a struggle for us, and when we become shorthanded, Donnie ends up doing a lot of the roads himself, which is the best use of his time also. So I think we'll eventually have a discussion, also have a discussion with the bus company to see if that's a possibility of incorporating that in the contract, certainly with board's approval and board's awareness.
How many places do we have kids going?
I think we're down one, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, you want to cause more.
Yeah.
St. Cloud and South Center Melrose.
Sure.
And the inner city, Philip's Two and Cat Band Drive.
Yeah.
We're in Minnesota.
No.
I don't think we do right now.
No, not right now. It could be, but not right now.
So these are services we can't provide?
We, I mean, we provide them by special ed.
By transport.
By transporting them, yes. And right now, we don't have the programs that these students need. Now, that might be something else for us to have a discussion on later. I certainly have talked with Lori about that. I mean, she would certainly like to see us awkward a little bit more, but that's a big discussion, because you end up, just have, you might have one student needing those specific needs. So is it cost-effective to have a program for one student in the building versus transporting? That's, that's a discussion you would have to have.
So, move. Motion by Mark. Okay. Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. And number six, would you consider approval of Krista Anderson for special ed band driver beginning, see number four, 2012?
We can have the same discussion.
Second.
Motion down.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll clear this here, I need to make sure my reports are ready. Number one is to recap the board planning session, which, was that last Thursday?
Yeah, we've had some planning sessions, and it was brought to my attention, I think it's a great idea about me doing, truly me of doing a better job at key events, and then posting those minutes on what the work session was. So that was, I've discussed that with a couple community members, and I think it's a good idea. I think it makes it out there so that people can see that we did the work session. So I will, because I took notes on that, I will clear out the two work sessions we've had, because we have the one on the goals. As that shakes off, and I get those rewritten for the board, and they go to it, we'll revisit it. So I think that'll be pretty clear to the community, and the other work session will be really helpful, I think. So I will type up some minutes, and I think we should post those. I think it's a.
She summarizes the discussion.
She summarizes the discussion to make sure that the community, it's very transparent to the community what we're doing in those work sessions.
Any other comments from the board on the planning session?
I guess if I could make a comment, I just thought the goal session would be very well, very good discussion. I think that's something that we can, can you need to do it, come up with issues that we need to discuss, is to have a work session, have a quick, open discussion with those things to talk about some of the difficult things that we're going to face. So I was very pleased with, with both sessions. I met with my administrative team for the, the piece with the levy and possible cuts and possible things that we would like to add. So we'll continue to meet, and we hope to get that to the board fairly, fairly quick. Like I said, I think when that happens, we'd have another work session to go over that, make sure that our message is what the board wants, and we intend that, we provided the board with the information that they requested.
Anybody else? All right, and Bob, you have a few lines you have to add there.
Okay, I do have a number of things. I do first want to make a clarification about the financial situation over the 2011, 12, and 12, the current one, 1213. We did receive approximately an additional hundred and eighty-eight dollars under the 2011 education bill. The 2011 education bill did cover the 2011, 2012, and the 2012, 2013. It did cover one hundred and eighty-eight dollars total. It came in three sources. One was the basic funding formula per pupil unit. I believe we got fifty dollars the first year. I think we got fifty dollars this year. All of it didn't come to us, it wasn't, I don't believe, but it wasn't a hundred and eighty-eight dollars for both years. I think we got fifty dollars the first year, plus some special ed. I don't think the literacy dollars came until this year. So we got another fifty dollars, some special ed dollars, plus the literacy dollars on the top of it, and I think that's where the hundred and eighty-eight dollars comes from. And we have, you know, that, that isn't the funding formula, and it was, was cleared by the state. What we don't know with that is always what the state will do. We have the dollars now. I, at least when I checked, the fifty dollars on the formula seems to be pretty solid. I don't think the state's going to look at that. My, probably my bigger worry is the literacy dollars. That was an addition for this year. What the state will do as far as next year, I don't know. Right now, I've heard no indication that they're going to look at taking it away, but that was kind of very directed towards literacy in the elementary schools. So we did get that, and I went back there with the community as we started to discuss the new levy. I want that to be all of that. Yep, that's what we got. All of our financial predictions were with that in the, in our projections. So it wasn't like we kept that out of the projections when we looked at things, those dollars are in there. Okay, so that was one issue. I know that there's been a concern with the open meeting laws. I can only say from my point that since I've been here, I have not seen any violations. If we do have a violation, because I don't believe any of this are perfect, I would certainly want to know that, and I would want to clear it up and make sure that the correction is made immediately. We have no intent on violating those laws. The public has a right to be there. The community has a right to know when it's happening, and we'll make sure that we get posted. Where I worry more right now is if there's a little thing, and I'm supposed to present it exactly this way or that way, I need to make sure I get caught up on that a little bit more, because I've never closed a meeting, I've never reopened a meeting. So I need to make sure I know how to do that appropriately according to the open meeting laws. By the time that gets on the agenda, I'll make sure that we, we know how to do that. But we certainly don't want to violate any law, whether it's open meeting law or any other law for that matter, and we certainly want to correct it if it ever does occur. There was also concerns, and I think rightfully so, there was a concern about a modification of minutes for the board. And what happened, and I think I can certainly see where it's very confusing, when you look at our website, it shows the board minutes, and it says modify, modify, and then it gives a date. I don't think we're using the right terminology, because really it should be the board minutes, posted, then the date. We don't modify anything, but right now, that's the way it looks on our website, and that would be confusing to me if I looked at it. And then what further confused it is that for one time, we forgot to post those minutes. So when they eventually got posted, it was a number of months later, and again, it wasn't because the minutes were modified, it was because they were posted late, and we know that. We caught it, we posted them as soon as we noticed it, but I can certainly understand where that confusion is, and now it'll be our job to work with the website, and I'd really like to see the minutes posted, and then the date that they're posted, so that there's no confusion. But there was no modification as far as we look back to the minutes, and I want the community to understand that, we don't go back and modify any, the minutes are the minutes. All right? And then, so to care of that, and we, and we forgot to do it. Other things, unless there's any other questions by board on, on those issues? Certainly the community members here, if there's questions for what I say, please do ask me afterwards, and I'll get you an answer. All right? First day of staff today. What grade? What a tricky staff. Fantastic, I felt absolutely welcomed here. You know, they're excited to be back. We're doing some staff development in the next few days, because there is, the staff are back today, tomorrow, and on Thursday, and then we have students starting right after later. But we've got some staff development with technology. We've gotten more iPads now. We certainly will, will want more. It certainly has, if the levy were to pass, I think that would be something on my list to say we need more technology for our students to work with in the building, but technology by itself really doesn't improve the student achievement. It's how you use that technology that improves student achievement. So we're going to do some staff development with the staff on how better to incorporate that into their curriculum, because again, technology by itself will not improve student achievement. If all you're going to do is, is an iPad, is to play games, you're not going to see much happen. All right? So that's where our staff development for the next three days is fully conceived on. And then just normal staff meetings, those types of things. We're anxious to meet our students. We have an open house on Wednesday, so everybody knows, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. At the high school, middle school, and the elementary. We would encourage all the students and the parents to come. I think it's a good time for you to meet the staff, find classrooms. I always found it interesting that for some students, opening that locker for the first time is the big thing that they need to get accomplished during open house. But it is an absolute time for them to become familiar with buildings and meet their teachers. I'd encourage everybody to come. Good news, we meet AYP, and that's adequate yearly progress in all the areas this year. That's a wonderful accomplishment by this district, considering you were in AYP just last year, and well, three years ago, you were in AYP and more things, and for the last three years, you've just clawed your way to the point where just about in every area, you were at or exceeded the state's average. That's a wonderful accomplishment. Now, did we do everything that we wanted to do? No. We do have a lot of work in front of us. The staff understands that. I think they're anxious to continue the, the great work that they've already started, but I think that is certainly something this community and the district should be proud of. I think it's a great accomplishment. Again, students on September 4th, day after Labor Day. I think at this point, we're just anxious to get our students to start our business of educating students. So I think right now, we're just anxious to get a core. Now, I'm hoping that we don't continue to get the weather that's predicting for Thursday. Buildings will be hot if it hits a hundred, it starts right away and that, so we're hoping it will cool down a little bit. The last thing I really do want to talk about is providing more information concerning levy that the district's going to be asking for in November. The current levy right now is fourteen hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents, so I'm just going to round it to four sixteen. It's per pupil unit. It closes at the end of this year. All right? With the closing of the current levy, the district will lose approximately four hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. We'll be asking the community to approve a new levy that will be for seven hundred and twenty-three dollars per pupil unit in November. New levy will bring in an additional three hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars more than our current levy. So make sure you understand that, that's more than the current levy. All right? So that's would be what the current levy is making right now, plus the three hundred thousand dollars. We're going to be getting a lot more information out to the public. I know they need it. We need to tell them why we need the new levy. We need to explain what the levy dollars are going to be used for if they do approve the levy. We need to explain what will happen if the levy fails, because we would have to cut the four hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars in some manner, plus the district has been deficit spending, so the deficit spending would be on top of that. The board would have to make some decisions about how much of the reserve they would want to use, but we'll do more of a discussion with that as we start bringing out more information. I'm going to be personally writing a couple articles just about the facts of the levy for the paper, for the website, and doing all weekend to get all of the community members all the information they need to make an informed decision before they vote. I think that's one of the main things that we want to do. I'll be presenting to a few groups, I've already got a few scheduled, but certainly if any of the community members would like me to either talk with them about the levy in person, or there's a group that they would like me to talk to, I would certainly be happy to do that. All they need to do is get ahold of us at district office and set up a meeting. Again, we want the community members to make an informed decision, so we would need to get them all the information that they need. Any questions by the board?
There was a question this morning that staff discussing that, I don't know the correct term for it, the button, that's supposed to be on the website, but they couldn't.
Yeah, hopefully that'll be up. It'll only take us about a half day. I'd like to review a couple more areas in it, just to make sure that I'm satisfied with it. I do have the link up. So I hope to take care of that tomorrow.
So I asked, I talked to Matt, and he said he didn't have the link yet, so I'm glad you have it. I thought we were still stalled.